Good evening and welcome to the Yukon City Council Municipal Authority. It is October 5th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. We're in the council chambers here in the Centennial Building at 12 South 5th Street in Yukon, Oklahoma. I'd like to welcome all of our students here tonight. I wish you could see what a roomful of students we have. Thank you for coming. And we will start with our invocation with Father John. And then we'll have our flag salute.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we thank you for the gift of this beautiful day, for the countless ways in which you bless our lives. We ask you, Lord, for your blessing upon our community. We ask you to bless this council, to bless all of our city employees, all the volunteers who give for themselves to make the lives of others better. We ask you to bless our schools, our teachers, our wonderful students, and pray that this will be a good year for them all. And help us, dear Lord, to always trust in you so that guided by your grace, we might be wise and strong and faithful and doing our best to love others as you have first loved us. We pray for these things through Christ our Lord. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, united as one with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Selby?
Here.
Kachini?
Here.
Wooten?
Here.
Yanda?
Gillen?
Here.
All right, we will have, we have some presentations, some proclamations. Start with our first one. George Ramey has been our lawyer for a very, very long time, and he is retiring. He was unable to be with us tonight, but I'd still like to read his proclamation. Whereas George Ramey, a lifelong resident of Yukon, having been born and raised in Yukon and graduating from the United, from Yukon High School as one of the top sprinters and hurdlers in the entire state, has served the city with distinction as a municipal judge for 47 years from 1974 to 2021. And whereas in his many years as a citizen and resident of Yukon include not only service as a municipal judge for Yukon, but also as a judge of the Court of Appeals for the Supreme Court of Oklahoma from 1982 to present, service on various city committees and membership in the Yukon Chamber of Commerce during which he had been a very dedicated and given generously of his time to benefit of the residents of Yukon and Canadian County, and was known for the community service orders he issued that worked to the benefit of all of Yukon. And whereas Judge Ramey has an extensive and lengthy list of accomplishments to his name and is known throughout the legal community for his ability to give fair opportunity to all who attended the courtroom and to impose unique conditions for those on probation that came before him and for his original dad joke humor. And whereas the Yukon City Council does hereby wish to take this opportunity to extend its heartiest congratulations to Mr. Ramey and to express on behalf of all citizens a most sincere thank you for his years of service to the city and community and to extend its best wishes for a healthy, long, enjoyable retirement. Now therefore, be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Yukon gives special thanks and recognition to Judge George Ramey for his outstanding contributions to the City of Yukon, but also to Canadian County and Oklahoma for his many years of dedicated service by declaring Tuesday, October 5th, 2021 to be George Ramey Day in the City of Yukon. Signed on this seal, Yukon, the 5th day of October, 2021. So, Mr. Ramey, we thank you. Our next proclamation will be to our fire department. Whereas the City of Yukon is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city, and whereas we recognize that fire is a great concern, we also recognize that homes are the locations where people are at the greatest risk of fire. Half of all home fire deaths result from fires reported at night between 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM when most people are asleep. Residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room outside each separate sleeping area and on every level of the home. And whereas residents should have a plan for testing their smoke alarms and a fire escape plan. Now therefore, I Shelley Selby, Mayor of Yukon, do hereby proclaim October 2021 as Fire Prevention Month throughout this city. And I urge all the people of Yukon to install smoke alarms in every bedroom during Fire Prevention Month 2021 and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Yukon's fire and emergency services, given under my hand and seal the citizens of Yukon on this 5th day of October 2021. Okay, we're gonna take a picture. You'd like to say a few words for us? Oh wait, he wants my tape. Sorry. Part of the job.
So getting out in the community and talking about fire safety and fire prevention's a big part of what we do at the fire department. And our guys really take great pride in that. You know, they like to get out in the public and teach people about fire safety and fire prevention. So what makes October so special for us, though, being Fire Prevention Month, is we get to reach out to several of the kids across our community. And I think this year we're gonna hand out about 1,200 fire safety and prevention packets out to kids along with some goodie bags. And normally, we would actually go to all the classes and meet with them in person, but due to COVID restrictions and some school policies, we're not able to do that this year. So hopefully, they can take that information home and visit with their parents about it and, and learn some things that way. Two things I'd like to mention in there, and it's also in the proclamation, is having an escape plan. We think that's very important. It's kind of like a fire drill at school, you know? They need to have a plan on how you're gonna get out of your house safely if it catches on fire, and then to practice that plan. So we emphasize that with the kids. And then once they get outside, we need them to have a meeting place. And it can be somewhere in the front yard, kind of like a mailbox or a tree out in the front yard. And why that's so important is when we get on scene, the first thing we're gonna do is be able to ask the homeowners, is everybody out safely? Secondly, we also want to emphasize again, smoke detectors. We would like to see every, every citizen in our community have working smoke detectors. And then we also like them to test them monthly and change the batteries twice a year. So hopefully, by reaching out to the community like that, we can do our part in helping to keep our citizens as safe as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. We have the best fire department in, I believe, the state of Oklahoma. Our Pafford ambulances get there very quickly, but fire department always beats them there. They are amazing. All right, our last one is for the veterans. While they're coming down, my kids always loved fire prevention. It was the highlight of their school year to get to see them. But I loved it because I got to wake them up at 1:30 in the morning to run our fire escape plan, and it was wonderful. All right, whereas it is the honor of the City of Yukon and its citizens to recognize our armed forces veterans who have sacrificed and in many instances paid the ultimate price for our freedom. And whereas thousands of brave Americans served our country with courage, honor, and valor, and whereas we, along with a million of other Americans, can attest to the importance of their sacrifices and contributions for our freedom and security. Whereas the citizens of Yukon will always remember and pay homage to our military community, both active and inactive, for their contribution, dedication, and commitment to the cause of our freedom. Whereas in honor of these dedicated men and women, we pledge our continued defense of our nation so that their sacrifice will stand before the entire world as a tribute to the spirit and determination of a people dedicated to the principles of freedom and democracy. And now therefore, I Shelley Selby, Mayor of Yukon, do hereby proclaim October 11th through November 11th as Veterans Appreciation Month in the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, and encourage all citizens to honor and thank our veterans for all they've given in service to this country and to remember the heroes who gave the ultimate sacrifice and those who are or were missing in action or prisoners of war, given under my hand and seal of the City of Yukon on this 5th day of October 2021. And I'm gonna give it to both of you.
I want to thank the city, the residents, and all our veterans for all that they have done for us. They have supported everything that we have done for the city. They have supported us while we have been overseas. And as you know, we've still left some Americans overseas, and I don't want to get into the politics of that, but please pray for those Americans that are still left behind enemy lines. I'm working feverishly myself with some of the congressmen to get those folks out of there, but please put your prayers for them. And thank you very much for supporting the veterans that you see here today.
Well, I have been so happy and privileged to work with the Yukon Salutes Project now for two years. And we are, the banners will be going up over the next couple of days, and we have a kickoff reception for the display on Saturday. So if you're not familiar with the Yukon Salutes, that is a, a unique opportunity to honor our local hometown heroes. And I say that instead of veterans this year because we have added our first responders, and we're very proud to do so. We have, we have so many in our community that do so much, and our banner display will honor 44 of our hometown heroes. However, we have so many more that have served and continue to serve. I looked at the records from the banners that are going up this year, and they served as early as 1941, and some are still serving. And so that's 80 years of service of our hometown heroes for our freedoms, and we just appreciate that so much. And on Saturday, we do have the kickoff for our display, and it will start at 11:00 AM at the Yukon Veterans Museum. Thank you for sponsoring that little reception that we're gonna have there. We're gonna reread the proclamation because many of them are able to come with their family members, and some of them are surprises that their banner's gonna be hung. So we invite you to come out and support it Saturday at 11:00 AM at the Yukon Veterans Museum. And if you can't, just be sure that you come by and see the banners.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, do we have any visitors today who would like to speak?
None tonight, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. We will recess now as Yukon City Council and reconvene as Yukon Municipal Authority. The number one, YMA Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve: A) the minutes of the regular meeting September 21st, 2021; B) payment and material claims in the amount of $173,778.75. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote, please.
Kachini?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Gillen?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Will now adjourn as YMA and reconvene as the Yukon City Council. Item one, Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve: A) the minutes of the regular meeting of September 21st, 2021; B) payment and material claims in the amount of $485,241.81 and addendum to the Prisoners Public Works Program contract between the Oklahoma Department of Corrections and the City of Yukon; and D) setting the date for the next regular council meeting for October 19th, 2021, 7:00 PM in the council chambers of the Centennial Building, 12 South 5th Street. Do I have a motion?
Motion accept.
Second.
Any discussion?
On letter C, can you touch on what the addendum is?
Yes. Yes, sir. Our current contract on the PPWP, we have 12. We are moving that to eight. They are getting less prisoners that are able to work at the prison in Union City. They're getting more violent criminals there, and we cannot take any of those that will be able to work at our facilities.
And this is something we can revisit in the future if it can change back to 12 or whatever?
Yes, we'd love to.
Pretty good. Thank you.
We desperately need 12 of those.
Yes, ma'am.
Right? Let's vote, please.
Gillen?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Item two, report of boards, commission, and city officials. Ms. Tammy?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make some announcement tonight. Union Pacific is in town, and they are working on the railroad crossings throughout the city. We have a road closure on the 7th of October. It will be closed to all traffic. That is 5th Street between Inla and Kalai and 11th Street between Inla and Kalai. Union Pacific will be doing some repairs. There will also be another road closure on October the 8th. They will be closing Frisco Road north of Highway 66 and Richland Road north of Highway 66. Union Pacific will also be doing some road crossing repairs there, too. I'd like to update you on some of our city projects. On the Garth Brooks Trail, that's along Garth Brooks Boulevard, construction started August the 2nd, and our estimated completion date is sometime in January, February of 2022. On the Frisco I-40 interchange, the interchange is open. There is still a punch list that the contractor is working on, but it is open. On the State Highway 4 Phase 2 project, the final inspection of the relocation of the water and sanitary sewer lines were completed. Contractors are finishing up the punch list, and ODOT is expected to advertise for bidding in November. Construction is supposed to begin in 2022. On the Garth Brooks Boulevard Traffic Improvement Project, traffic flow has improved. The Garth Brooks Boulevard Detector Equipment Replacement at five intersections has been completed and is in operation. 11th Street, the 11th Street Improvement Project is currently under construction and close to completion. We still have the striping to do and a final punch list is left to complete. Bass Bridge, we've got some drainage ditches that we've been working on, and the first one was Bass Bridge. They have been completed in that area. Our next project is going to be Turtle Creek. That is east of Kimball Park. The project is currently going through a permitting stage with the Corps. The project was approved on, by the City Council on September the 7th, so we are just waiting to get those permits back to get started on the project. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? On the railroad on Cornwell, are they finished with that completely?
No, sir.
Okay, so they're gonna come back and smooth it out some?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good, because it's pretty rough.
Yes, it is.
All right, thank you very much. Item three, to conduct a public hearing in consideration of declaring 224 North 3rd Street here in Yukon, Oklahoma, AKA lots 13 through 16, block 26, original town site, City of Yukon, in violation of Chapter 54, Section 54-215 of the Code of the City of Yukon, declaring it a public nuisance of such nature as to constitute grave and immediate danger to the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare, directing city staff to demolish the structure and declare the property as quickly as possible in accordance with Chapter 54, Section 54-3 of the Code of the City of Yukon, directing the city clerk to pursue the recovery cost for such work if done by the city, directing the city treasurer to place any such revenues collected into the specific fund for which said revenues were originally appropriated, and further directing the filing of a notice in the county clerk's office.
So moved.
Do we, we don't have to, this is just a hear.
We don't have to have a hearing?
Yeah, that's next.
Yes. Madam Mayor, I have brought before you tonight the 224 North 3rd Street, some photos for your information. The structure, basically, the walls have failed and the roof has failed, if you can see from the pictures.
Those were in our packets, too. Thank you.
Yes, so I just wanted to bring that before you. I think probably the owner or representative may be here tonight that would like to talk on this issue, but we bring it before you for your consideration.
Your Honor, I brought a, a letter of intent.
Excuse me, sir? Can you state, state your name, please?
Sorry?
Can you state your name, please?
An address.
An address.
I'm not understanding.
Name and address, sir. Name and address.
Kurt Green.
Thank you.
And I own the property at 224 North 3rd Street.
Thank you.
And so, we have decided to demolish that property, and I've got a letter of intent, and I'd be glad to give that to you or read it to you, whatever you prefer.
You can read it to us.
Okay. It's to the City Council, City of Yukon, Yukon, Oklahoma. Dear friends, this letter is to inform you that I have contacted Leonard Mason at 405 642-3897, who owns K&amp;M Wrecking Demolition Company. He has informed me that he will be able to schedule this and start within a month. He will get all needed permits with city and proof of his insurance. Should you have any questions, please do not hesitate to call me with kind regards, Kurt Green.
Thank you. I appreciate you doing that on your own.
Yes, ma'am.
I hated for us to have to do that.
Well, we don't want that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Seeing that, do we still need to go on with item number four?
We request that the City Council go ahead and go through the process with the understanding that we're gonna give him a time
Okay.
that he can have the building structure removed. So we would prefer you go ahead and remove that.
All right, thank you. I, I think he went ahead and left. He left? Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to talk on this? Okay, the public hearing is closed, and we'll go on to item number four. Consider a motion for discussion, consideration, and possible action declaring 224 North 3rd Street, Yukon, Oklahoma, AKA lots 13 through 16, block 26, original town site, City of Yukon, in violation of Chapter 54, Section 54-215 of the Code of the City of Yukon, declaring it a public nuisance of such nature as to constitute grave and immediate danger to the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare, directing city staff to demolish the structure and to clear the property as quickly as possible in accordance with Chapter 54, Section 54-3 of the Code of the City of Yukon, directing the city clerk to pursue the recovery cost for such work if done by the city, directing the city treasurer to place any such revenues collected into the specific fund for which said revenues were originally appropriated, and further directing the filing of a notice in the county clerk's office as recommended by the assistant city manager.
So moved.
Second.
We, we'd request that you would go ahead and amend that to include what he presented with K&amp;M Wrecking and the timeline, with that understanding?
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to amend item number four, that the owner has said he will, has an intent to have it demolished with K&amp;M Wrecking. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Are we putting a timeline on it? I would recommend
What's our timeline?
I would recommend 60 days from, from today. He said within a month that could be done.
Is that enough?
That's more than enough.
Okay.
If he starts within 30 days, he should have it hold out in two days, three at the most.
Do we want to say 30 days?
He said within 30 days he was gonna start, so I'd say what he's proposing.
60 days?
60 days.
Councilman Gillen's proposing works.
Sarah, did you get all that?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So now do we have another motion to do that?
Vote on the amendment.
Vote on the amendment.
Okay, we added the 60 days, though, so I need another motion, a first and second.
Motion to make it 60 days?
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
I was gonna say, for the record, you are declaring it to be a public nuisance.
Right. We just amended it to say that he's, we're gonna give him a chance, but it is a public nuisance. Okay.
So Mitch, is this anything? Is it gonna fall tonight? Is there a chance that it could go crumbling tonight? It's had what it's, it's pretty close, but we'll make sure that they do what they need to do to support it as best they can. Okay.
And there is no one living currently in it.
There is nobody currently living in it.
And no one's living in the parking lot.
To my knowledge, no. Thank you.
Right, let's vote, please.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Gillen?
Yes.
All right, consider item five, consider approving the purchase of a 2021 Chevrolet Suburban from Carter Chevrolet for replacement of Fire Command vehicle for the fire department in the amount of $44,767 to be purchased off state contract SW0035 as recommended by the fire chief. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Chief, the current one that you have, you're gonna keep it in the fleet and use it for, repurpose it for something else?
Yes, we're gonna use that for a train, a training slash staff vehicle. The guys will take the class and such, and we will be surplus in a 2009 GMC Yukon.
Pretty good. Thank you.
And as I understand, this is a pretty good buy.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it was about $11,000 off.
Off of it, good.
We found this vehicle, some, fire department had actually ordered it, and then they backed out of it, so it's saving us about $11,000 on the cost.
I like that. I like saving money. So thank you for doing that. Right, let's vote, please.
Kachini?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Gillen?
Yes.
Item six, consider awarding the contract for emergency storm debris removal to Shawnee Mission Tree Service, Inc., DBA, as Arbor Master in the amount of $151,900, and TFR Enterprises, Inc., in the amount of $159,550 as recommended by the city manager. Do I have a motion?
Motion accept.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Wooten?
Yes.
Gillen?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Is there any new business?
No new business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Council discussion, let's start with you, Mr. Councilwoman Wooten.
Checkfest was awesome. It was great to see so many people out there. Yeah, it was, it was just a blast.
I saw pictures of you and your family.
Yeah, it was, it was fun times, so that's all I got.
All right. Councilman Kachini?
Well, I want to start with the thanking of the city employees, the city, all our veterans that assisted in the dedication of the veterans' bench out there at the park. It looks beautiful, and I've already had a lot of veterans calling saying it was a great job, so I thank you all. And the second thing is just a reminder about October 9th, the dedication of the banners, which was already spoken about by Vicky. October 14th, this is our Yukon Veterans Gala. It's a dinner, entertainment, speakers, the whole nine yards, and it's only going to go for $30 a person. So please put that on your calendars and see someone from the Veterans Museum, myself, for tickets. Thank you all.
Councilman Gillen?
I would just echo, great time at the Checkfest and always reminded of how hard our city employees work when we have events like that. And thank you to Judge Ramey for all your years of service. Known, known Mr. Ramey a long time, and he had an opportunity to teach me a few lessons along the way, and also had the opportunity to swear into this chair with Judge Ramey directing that. So thank you, Judge Ramey, and we appreciate you.
Thank you. All right, just a few details. Chisholm Trail is coming up, October 16th. It'll be at Molly Spencer Farms. Then we have movie Then we have Movie at the Coop, that's Nightmare Before Christmas. It will be at Jackie Cooper, October twenty-second. And then October twenty-fifth, Mummy and Son, that'll also be at Jackie Cooper. And then Spooksville will be at the Yukon Community Center, October thirtieth, the same day that we're doing Halloween. Also, don't forget, this Saturday, we have another town hall meeting at Yukon Community Center at ten o'clock. It's your chance to have your voice heard and let us know what you would like to see. At our last meeting, we had a lot of teenagers. I would encourage you guys to come to that and let your voice be heard. I was able to go to Spanish Cove today and talk with them about this very same thing. And it's always amazing to get to see my friends at Spanish Cove, but to see their eagerness in filling out the survey. Sidewalks, I have heard some people complain about the sidewalks. That was not our timing, but the contractor's timing. And so the city had it out there, the contractor waited till the last time. So we apologize for any inconvenience that is around the school, but please note, that is not our fault. We're sorry. Make the most of your tomorrow. Be kind to one another. This meeting is adjourned.